Seems like forever again.
I know, there's gotta be a later one than this. This really is the last one. All this free time.
Whatever we had, you know, still going.
Yeah. At seven o'clock in.
All right, it is seven o'clock. All right, gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming out. Uh, first thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our August eighth meeting. Have any comments on the minutes?
No.
Nope.
If none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August eighth meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right. First applicant on the agenda is Romeo lot line adjustment. There you go. You can come on up if you want or whatever you're most comfortable with, but you'll have a microphone there.
Um, yeah, I'm here. My name's Ricky Branco. I'm here on behalf of the Romeo property. I guess for this evening, um, we're seeking a number of waivers. Uh, the first of which, which is the, uh, the, the planned scale to be drawn at a smaller one. Uh, at, at a smaller scale than, uh, than, uh, what i- is required.
Before we get into the waiver request, can you give us a little?
Yeah.
Oh. On the project.
Um, sorry.
No worries.
Um, the property located on Lonely Road, um, it's just a simple lot line adjustment between the, um, the Brothers property and the Romeo property. Um, it's just to kind of, you know, uh, change, change the lot line there. Is it, uh, notice that little triangle down there? That's being given over to the Romeo property from the Brothers property. That's the only change that's occurring.
Just about an acre?
Uh, yeah, just under an acre.
I have a curiosity, what's the reason for that? Given most of it's in the easement.
I think it's because, uh, he owns the property on the other side of the Brothers property. So he wants a way to get across the properties without having to use the road, I believe.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's got the one on the other side there. This now makes it so the prop, his two properties touch each other.
All right, anybody have any questions? So. All right. Steve, do you have anything before he keep rolling? Okay. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, yeah, the first waiver was, um, uh, for the, requires the plan to be drawn at a scale which equals fifty feet. Uh, one inch equals fifty feet. Um, we would like it to be drawn, you know, at one equals a hundred because of the, the small nature of the project. Um, uh, waiver being requested, um, from thirty six, three sixty five eighteen C, which requires that zoning requirements of the natural resource protection standards be shown on the plan to allow for these requirements. Not to be shown on the plan as the plan is not creating any new lots. A waiver request for section three sixty five eighteen C, which requires the track boundary be determined by a field survey to allow for the partial lot line survey that was completed in common lots as to no new lots are being created. So, uh, the, the whole lots weren't surveyed, um, just the, just the parts that were, um, in, going to be changed. Waiver requests for, uh, three sixty five eighteen C, uh, section fourteen, which requires that all existing building structures, structures, driveways, wells, sewer systems, utility easements and other easements. Utility poles accompany the plan to allow for the, uh, existing features within the lot line adjustment be shown. Um, there's nothing really in the area. I think we show the driveway that's, that's kind of in that area, but that's really the only thing that's over there. Um, we showed everything on the Romeo property, just not over on the, the Augustine property because their structure is way over on the other side of the property. It's nowhere near the, the lot line adjustment. Um, waiver requested, um, for three sixty five forty eight B, which requires permanent stone or concrete monuments to be accurately placed by licensed surveyor at the intersection of all lines forming angles and a change in direction of lines in the boundary perimeter of the property and at all corners of the lots within a subdivision to allow for iron pins to be accurately placed by a licensed surveyor at the intersection of all lines forming angles, since there was only really two pins to be set, really, um, that, that we just, you know, set them with pins instead of concrete monuments.
Did I see something on your review about that?
Yeah. We started.
Gotcha. So. Our engineer doesn't want us to approve that, uh, recommend that.
Okay, um. It's just the new line, it's just the two, yeah, there's two, two new property corners that, that are, that are there, so, you know. Guess we figured we tried for it. Uh, waiver request. Uh, waiver requested for a section three sixty five forty eight C, which requires that all streets be monumented on the ultimate right of way um, to allow for iron pins if and when the ultimate right of way is to be taken by the township. Um, I don't, was there, I don't think there was any issues with that one, was there?
So it'd just be that a little bit by the corner then, right?
Yeah, there's a, a section that's approximately, let's see, point one nine six acres, that would be the ultimate right of way that would be dedicated along Lonely Road. Actually, in number eight of my waiver list here, um, I'd request that, um, we, 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 we would be okay with the, the, we, we would want a waiver from, um, dedicating the portion of Augustine Road, since it's all the way on the other side of the other property. Doesn't really come close to affecting this property and it's just a small section at like the end, end of a private right of way. So, um.
But not.
Not lonely. We're, we're okay with, you know, dedicating the right of way, offering that for dedication. We would seek a waiver to, on the dedication on the Augustine drive side or Augustine Road. Um, I know the one was, uh, I think one was on the right of way and then the other one was very close. I don't have the measurement on there, but it was, you know, very, very close to the right of way line. Okay, yeah, we, we can do that. Um, I think for the stone and iron pin that's found, that one's not quite on the right of way there. That one's about eight feet off. That was number six. Cause out front there on the left side, there are, there were two iron pins found, uh, one, I believe, being very close to the right one. Okay. Okay, I thought there was a mention in one of your comments about Augustine Road should be offered for dedication. That's why I, okay, okay, okay. Yes. Okay.
So what does that do with his waiver request? That's number six. And which one had the, uh, one we're not collecting.
That's number five.
All right, what do you fellows think about these waivers? Aside from number five?
I guess the only other one that I didn't mention was the, uh, installation of improvements, cartway widening, curb and sidewalk, obviously because of the minor nature, we seek to have that waived as well.
Should we run through Steve's letter or?
Uh, we, we probably should do that. Is there anything, Stephen, here that, uh, we haven't touched on already? You mind doing that, just running down Steve's review letter?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, I believe we did send a, item number one, uh, verification and notice of plan filing to adjoiningers. I believe we did send that in. Property to be conveyed to Romeo is generally located adjacent to Romeo driveway entrance off of Lonely Road. Uh, the area is in part encumbered by an existing overhead utility easement. Commands will not impact. I don't think there's anything. Uh, yes, and I, I did kind of darken those areas in. Yeah, yeah, I, I. Just that, so they stood out a little bit more. Um, let's see. Uh, yeah, I do believe we corrected that as well. And I made sure all of those matched on the plan. Number three. I think there was anything there. Oh, um, deeds for the, the existing parcels, is that what you were asking for? Okay, yeah, we, we can, we would certainly, uh, can provide those. For number five. Um, I think that was the monumentation thing we were just discussing. Um, it sounds like we have that under control. Uh, number six was, um, a waiver that we requested. Um, I don't think there's anything there. Okay, uh, number seven, I think we discussed as well, that had to do with, uh, ultimate rights of way dedication and Lonely and Augustine. Number eight is, you know, we, we would, uh, uh, well, would comply with that one, um, once everything is, is installed. Uh, number nine, um. Yeah, and we, we would, we would submit any of those, uh, those new deeds and deeds of transfer for, for, uh, review. Um, when it comes to number ten, I believe we removed the waiver list, um, which I'm imagining I would put back on after the waivers are approved. No? Okay. Um, and then, uh, for B, you know, we, we adjusted the blocks to, for both owners, include the tax parcel numbers and review, remove the references to lower Salford Township in place of West Rockville.
All right. All right, so let's get back to the waiver request. Are we comfortable with the request that we, uh, seem to be accepting?
Number six on the review letter isn't actually on the waiver request letter.
Number six.
Right.
The cartway curb sidewalk.
Uh, it is on the second page, number seven on the waiver request letter. Oh, sorry, I thought we submitted a new one yesterday. Um, I have a. I have one that was revised as of yesterday, so, um, that, that it, I have a new one which has a seven and an eight at the end requesting. Um, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
You have?
I do.
You're right with the partial survey, Steve. Thank you.
Okay, so one through six are the same, so seven and eight are new?
Yeah, seven and eight would be in addition.
Yeah, there's your answer. Leave number six. And again, we were, you're comfortable with, uh, no dedication on Augustine?
Right, number five would be only on the new lot line. And number eight would be amended student only kicking right away.
You guys comfortable with all this?
Yes.
All right, so someone want to try to put together a motion that incorporates all of this? So it'd be one, three, four, six and seven, and amending five and eight?
Motion, we approve waivers one through four. Um, six and seven amend waiver five to concrete monuments only on the new property line. And number eight to require the right of way and monumentation only on Lonely Lane wave August.
All right. All in favor of, let's see, that was recommending approval of waiver request. Seeing fine by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right. What's, where did that put us with this project? So we're recommending the waivers, can we recommend preliminary final on this already?
Yeah.
We're clear, right? All right, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend preliminary final approval of, uh, of these six, four, eight.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you, good luck.
All right, next on the agenda is select property to Lawn Avenue.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Brian Folk with C to C Design Group. Here with applicant Brian Grant, uh, discuss what we're calling the Lawn Avenue, um, development. Uh, this sketch was, I believe it was the August meeting. We were here, um, with a sketch presented, uh, listened to your feedback, got a review from the township engineer and we went back to the drawing board, made some modifications. Um, and have resubmitted a revised sketch, so we're still at sketch plan, just looking for feedback, um, from the planning commission before we move on to preliminary plan. Um, I'll start by kind of going over, um, some of the changes that we made. Like I said, they came from, from both the township engineers, review comments, planning commission comments, resident comments, and then we did take the design a little bit further, um, with some of the, uh, stormwater and, and whatnot, so. Um, first, biggest difference is, uh, obviously density, number of units. Uh, we, we had eighty-eight units on the previous submission, we are now down to seventy-five new single family uh, parcels or, or single family lots. We have uh, road access is, remains, uh, the same, um, has three access points down on Lawn Avenue, uh, one on Forest and then an emergency access only up on, uh, Mountain Ro, Mountain View Road. One of the, the biggest difference that you'll see graphically on the plan is, uh, on the previous sketch, um, that the road that's running vertical, um, went down on the, on the plan, uh, from Lawn up to Mountain View, has been shortened to five hundred feet to meet the cul-de-sac length requirements. Uh, previously had, it ran all the way up, um, and stubbed just shy of Mountain View. Um, and then we also had a stubb street, uh, going to the parcel to the west. Um, I believe the planning commission felt that was, uh, not a parcel that was developable for the future. So that stubb street was, was not something the township wanted to see, so we eliminated that. Uh, we shortened the, the cul-de-sac down, put a bulb on it. We do have, I think your ordinance allows us up to twelve units, we have sixteen, fifteen or sixteen, depending if you count the one at the intersection, but we'll go with sixteen, that's worst case. Showing, so we would, would need a waiver for a number of units, uh, on a, on a cul-de-sac. Um, again, we do have the emergency access, uh, coming out the back. Some of the other items that we, we took into account, uh, there was some discussion about open space parcels uh, being small, um, oddly shaped, uh, and whatnot, so uh, the, the, the property itself leads to that, uh, kind of development, um, just the way it's configured. Uh, but we did try to maximize the, the size of the open space parcels and minimize the number of smaller pieces, irregular shaped ones. So we, we pushed the road and the lots all the way over to one, one side and allowed the open space to run up the west side behind the lots. Um, and try to create a more larger usable open space as opposed to some smaller irregular shaped open space, so we, we tried to address that as, as much as feasible, given the lock configuration that we're working with. I think the last item that's of note, that's different is the, the parcel, um, to the south of Lawn. We had a stubb street shown previously, we added a temporary cul-de-sac bulb there. Um, and a stormwater facility down there. Um, so that was kind of cleaned up a little bit.
Nice, why, why are you calling that a temporary?
Same question.
Uh, because it's going to, hopefully it's, it's going to be stubbed or it's going to be right of way provided for future development. If, should that happen, if it never happens, it'll be a permanent one, but it's set up so that it can be removed and be extended. But if it doesn't, it developed and it'll remain the cul-de-sac, so. Um, I think that's the highlights, I, I guess, do you have any other, any questions on that? Um, we did get review letter and we can go through that. Uh, there's some items in there we can discuss a little further when we get there, but open up to your questions now.
Hang on one second. What about sewer and water services? I mean, that, that seemed to be the biggest hangup, you're gonna, one of the biggest hangups you're gonna be dealing with. What, what area is outside of the Act five thirty-seven?
Uh, this portion to the west in the, the RA zoning, the only portion that is not currently in the five thirty-seven plan, so we adjust those four, four additional lots that we would be asking for, for this project to be included. I think the intent, there was, there was no sewer at all on this side of three oh nine, we're now going to extend it, it's going to be right there. Uh, we're just asking to extend it for those, those four lots, basically. Part of this.
Discussions yet with Percoccy on your plan?
Uh, yes, we've had, uh, initial discussions with Percoccy, we are currently working on doing a, a planning module um, for kind of the whole area, we have several tracts of land and several developments going on at one time, so there's a lot of moving parts with the sewer, there's certain ones that are in the area, some that aren't. We're trying to do one global kind of planning module and address everything at once. Um, the reason we're moving forward with this is it's kind of the simplest, it's in the area. Um, we're going to bring the sewer in, it's kind of the key to the whole, the whole piece is, is to get the sewer into this one. Um, and, and water and get this thing moving, so.
Well, Steve, will that require an amendment to the Act five thirty-seven or a revision of some sort?
It's around by the.
Right.
A little confusing because everything is in the five thirty-seven plan, hanging out of planning. This is a little bit more involved because we.
Sewer service area.
Right.
Bigger amendment.
Understood, yeah. And what will that entail?
I don't know if we were at any of the board meetings and talking about the cul-de-sac site, the reserving state. That same kind of idea. That you have to, uh, if the notice by property owner, you have to go through a process of advertising it publicly during. It can be done in conjunction with the overall. A little bit more. But that said, there's the bigger picture of well, the potential would breed some change in boundaries of this. And then you would have, the tenant would also have to agree with Percoccy Regional Authority or whatever servicing authority to change the service area agreement, because our service area agreements separate from the Act five thirty-seven plan, but mimic the boundaries.
Right.
That doctrine would have to be amended all.
When was the last time we did a five thirty-seven plan? Revision or date? Just trying to figure out if we're coming into something like that, see the D P scheme trying to force a only five thirty-seven plan.
Sorry, yeah. This might, this might hold them in the bank, so if they see that we're doing something.
And I see other sticklers, another stickler pumping station. You're gonna need to go in front of zoning hearing on that?
Uh, yes, we understand. Uh, yes, we understand that we will have to attend for special exception for the, for the utility use in this zoning district. Go for the special exception. So that's, that's understood.
Have you had any discussion with the Township about amending the boundaries of the, of the servicing area with the Township, not P R A?
I think we had some initials at staff level. I think we're going to be making some sort of a submission to the, to the board to discuss all of these at one time. Again, this one, we've kind of moved forward because it really only impacts those four lots. Everything else is kind of independent of that, that this, this couldn't really move forward without that if we didn't do those, those four lots over there with Publix, Public Works. So.
All right, you guys have any more discussion about? All right, why don't we move forward? Do you want to go down the review list? Unless you have anything else you want to discuss before you get in there.
No, I guess the only other big item that everybody always brings up is traffic for the whole thing. I believe a traffic study was submitted for a, a regional for all the projects that we have going on. I don't know if it's every project, but most of the projects going on, I think it was all-inclusive that was submitted. It was not in time for this meeting. We don't have a review at this time. It's just, just was submitted under separate cover. So that's in process and into the Township for, for review. So we understand that's a, that's a big item and we're trying to move that forward as well. So, all right, with that, I'll kind of try to zip through this letter here and, and hit the highlights. And Steve, yell and stop if there's something you want to point out to the Planning Commission. If I, number one is, is just noting the lot sizes. Number two talks about the Coche parcel that's awful here. It's not part of our development. We are going to be showing, we'll show setbacks and show that it's still in compliance and we're not creating any zoning issues at this time. So that, that detail isn't shown here, but we will as part of the preliminary plan. Three, I guess we'll go to three A, open space, open space G. Can you go to the second? The other second one on there might be easier for everybody. There you go. Open space G is the orange portion up there. That is part of the Young tract. I think I got them mixed up. Fisher track, sorry, Fisher track. Young is the yellow one. Fisher track. The plans were, and it's my fault, were incorrectly shown that that is going to be a, an easement. We're actually going to subdivide that parcel off and it's going to be its own parcel and be an open space parcel. So there won't be any setbacks to, to that. There's no building going to be done on that. And then we still have to determine with, with P R A, that's where the pump station is going to be, whether that's a separate lot or if that's an easement, this plan shows it as a separate lot, but we'll have to determine that with what P R A wants. Do they want a lot where they own it or do they just want us to create an easement on, on that lot already? But either way, we have it set up that it's kind of separate on its own and then we can figure that out.
Same thing with the Young lot?
What's that?
You're in the same thing with the Young property.
The, the Young property is, no, the Young property will be an easement on their property. That's not going to be a separate parcel. There's going to be the house on there and we're going to create a open space easement on that. We understand we got to get with the solicitor and go through the logistics of all that and make sure that's acceptable as we move forward. I think comment A is really referring to kind of the calculations and subtracting out the setbacks on those. So I do got to look at if we subtract out the setbacks on, on the Young tract, how that would impact us. I'm assuming, Steve, you're referring to like the front yard and side yard setbacks all around that parcel, but will it get, not be counted as open space? So I have to look at the impacts of that. I, that was not calculated that way now and we'll go ahead and, and look at that and account for it that way.
The fenced yard, part of the fenced yard on the Young property is included in it. Not readily accessible property. That's where the complications come in on privately owned.
Why would the Township agree to that?
Well, I think there's some way you can do it, but not necessarily like the fenced new yard.
Is the dog park?
Yeah, the harder. That has a ten acre wood from the back and you're overlapping the open space, open wooded area. Probably easier to drive it and head around it, get it through.
Right. And like I say, we'll work with the solicitor and if, if that's the issue is the fence, we can work through options to, to resolve. We understand there's some complication there and we'll now work through that. B, I think, is the similar discussion about public access and the fence. C is, talks about the water course running through the lower portion of the property. I believe it's lots sixteen through twenty-five or in twenty-five. We had wetland studies done. It's not a regulated water course. There was an old layer from an aerial or something that shows up on this plan that shows it as a water course. It's not a water course. We have, we'll provide documentation during the preliminary plan to show it's not a regulated water course. We don't have to provide the, the repairing buffers and, and whatnot for that because it's, it's not a regulated water course. But we'll, we'll provide all that information at preliminary plan. D, I think, is just a, just a comment about the site capacity caps and the open space and there's no open space requirements in the RA district. E, except it's like, oh, E was this parcel, the parcel to the south on, on Lawn Avenue. Steve suggesting that we create, we create our own site capacity, separate site capacity caps for that. And the reason we did not do that is, listening to the Planning Commission previously, they didn't want to see a lot of little open space parcels. And we thought by doing that separately and having to provide the open space separately on that parcel, we're going to just create a small little open space pocket over there when we can take that and incorporate that open space into the whole development and give it a little more open, a little more usable open space.
You did separate, you did open space, just like fast calculation, the whole property and you deducted the lawn area on the other side of the street. Which then gives you a smaller open space area because you're starting off a smaller net area.
Oh, so we just need to include that in our site capacity area?
But somehow I think we're losing.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from, if that's the case.
There's no, to my knowledge, there's no active environmental resources on that.
Correct.
That's not the problem. It's not like there's steam flows over there. At the open space. And even in the V T zone, there's not a density requirement, the middle of lot size. So it's not that they're circumventing the maximum blocks they can have either. It's not a density. But mostly no basic issue. We can talk about the break made up.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. I want to make sure it's included too. If, if somehow it's getting missed, we'll get that clarified. Separate capacity caps are, are fine if, if we're allowed to lump them into the total open spaces of development, not kind of create their own little pocket over there. That's what I, that's what we were trying to avoid. There was no intent to skip it there, but maybe it did. These calculations sometimes get a little challenging when we're making revisions all the time and updating them. So there, there may be something that is. I apologize.
Once you're creating the RA, do they meet the minimum lot size requirements for the RA area?
Yes. And then F just talks about, we got to update our table for sixty percent of the woodland protection. I think we had twenty percent, but I, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but we'll make sure that that is addressed during preliminary as well.
So before you move on, you know, again, you made some efforts to, to give us some, some more larger open space areas. You know, I'm looking at the plan from your previous plan. Aside from, you know, removing those, the homes to the left of the Young track and adding that open space, everything else looks pretty much the same. And I, I think that's, this was part of the, the issues that we were having, that this was just kind of thrown in where you could get it. I mean, it looks like you have trails going through the open space. What is the rectangular blue? I can't, I can't read anything on this plan here.
That's a stormwater facility. That's really not even counted in our open space.
That's, that's not an open space.
It is open space, but it doesn't, it's not used towards our open space requirement because your stormwater basins cannot be used for that. So I mean, there, I think there's a portion of here that is, but the majority of it is a stormwater facility. Same with the dark blue one.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about, that square one there.
Oh, that's a stormwater facility, the dark blue one, yes. I mean, just the way the property is configured, there's, there's really no way to get open space through that corridor anyway than, than won't be shown. And we're going to put a road through and have lots. The width is only what it is there. So we, we pushed it all to one side so we could get one width as wide as we could.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah, this is a hundred and fifty scale plan you're looking at too. So it's, it's a little bit deceiving when it looks like it's small and skinny and it's probably a hundred feet wide some places. You know, one inch is a hundred and fifty feet. So you're used to looking probably at a fifty scale plan when you're looking at these plans. So that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't even read which, what the letters are and he's the one, which, which is open space A? That's just about an A.
Open space A is the blue, the blue one that's a stormwater facility.
So that doesn't count toward your open space.
Yeah, that's about an acre, just about under an acre total gross and zero net towards the.
Got it. Yeah, I see that now. Okay, so which one is B then?
B is the cyan one, the other blue. And again, that one's three point two acres and only one point six seven is counting towards the open space. That would be area that outside of, of the basin.
So you have a basin in there?
Yes.
I mean, the biggest part of it's the basin.
Right, yeah. And then what's your C?
Uh, C is the red area at the bottom, pink, dark pink, I guess, or supposed to be red on the, on the.
That'll be complete open space. There's no facilities in there.
Correct. And then D would be the, it's, it's blue on my plan. It's purple on that plan. I'm not sure why they're different. But the purple area there, and again, that has some stormwater facilities.
Headed out of, out of that as well.
So that's again, four point eight acres and we have three point six counting towards. E is the small piece, the yellow one down here, all stormwater facility across the street. F is the yellow top. There's no stormwater facilities in. Oh, there is a, I'm sorry, there is going to be a small. In, actually, I deleted. And then G would be the orange portion up there on the Fisher track that we talked about actually being subdivided and being its own parcel, different than what's shown.
These all have, looks like you have at least walking paths or?
We have walking paths. There are some requirements for ball fields and, and I think courts, some kind of courts on here later in the, in the review.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that out a little later.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you, how do you guys feel about the reconfiguration of the place? I mean, this was a, this was an issue at last meeting.
Does the Fisher orange open space go out to burn that lane?
Does it go out to, no, no, it does not. Does not. They're going to retain that portion where the house is right now.
So it's between their house and the.
Yes, the area between.
And in that white spot within the orange spot is where you're proposing the pumping station.
That's correct. The only other thing in the open space would be the emergency access coming off the cul-de-sac up the Mountain View.
I mean, are the, are any of these parts, I mean, you did just mention, I told you to wait till a little later, but are any of these parcels of open space big enough for ball fields or basketball courts or?
I believe open space C, the pink one at the bottom, the magenta one, D, up at the top, the yellow one. So all three of those areas could easily handle some sort of a soccer field or courts or, or some amenities. Should it be determined that's what you guys want to see on these, on these plans?
Yeah, I do agree. Your scale is deceiving.
It's a good suggestion by Brian. I don't think that, I'm used to looking at it, but. Yeah, we'll have fifty scales of everything where you'll be able to.
For different pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is really difficult.
Especially when you're smaller, even more scaled down versions than a full sheet. Well, like definitely get some things worked out. He's been on private property for being counted as open space, right? All the other calculations have to be redone. It's pretty close, twenty, thirty, twenty-two acres.
Right.
So if that doesn't allow for sufficient space, yeah, creates an issue.
I'd just like to hear a little bit more when we get to number twelve and Steve's letter about the cul-de-sac as opposed to the through road and how that might relate to the open space calculations that we're talking about here. So, but I don't, that part notwithstanding, I'm nothing, I don't have a problem with anything.
Yeah. All right, let's move forward then. We need to, we'll circle back.
Okay. Or was it number four, I guess we're on? Four B talks about, I guess, four A talks about giving consideration to bus stop and mailbox locations. I guess that all really comes into play whether these are public or private streets. If they're public streets, they'll probably have mailboxes out front and, and be delivered. And the buses, school buses would. Well, that's something we'd have to. No, it's, yeah, it's good to bring it up now while we're. Uh, B talks about HOA, for the open space to be owned and maintained by the HOA. We'll provide those H A A docs. C is block length specified to be five hundred. It's allowed to go to eight hundred where, where walking trails are proposed. We are proposing walking trails. Uh, looks like Steve does note that the road C that goes out the forest does exceed the eight hundred feet. However, the majority of that is in the RA zoning district. So. Um, I don't believe the block length is an issue in the RA zoning district.
Is that an issue, Steve?
Uh, four D talks about the cartway size. We're proposing a twenty-six foot wide, wide cartway with a forty-six foot wide right away. Parking on one side. To meet the parking requirements. We are showing, um, single car garage, which doesn't count towards our parking. It did note two car garage, but I believe it's gonna be a single car garage, um, somewhere we did say two car, but. Um, and then two cars back to back in a, in the driveway. Uh, we have forty feet from the right away line to the garage. Um, and then one car out front in front of it on the street. Um, we'll provide a parking analysis of number of spaces you get on the street to make sure we meet all those requirements. With parking on one side, um, if we have to go to parking on two sides to meet it, or we'll come up with other parking requirements, we will. Uh, we understand we have to meet those, those requirements, but I believe what shows can comply. We just didn't detail it on the sketch.
But it seems a little tight. What's that?
One side parking, you got houses on both sides and you have parking on one side of the street. And you already can't count your garage. And it's less than the.
But your garage is gonna exist. It doesn't count, but exists, I mean, as an option.
But the cartway right away and width serve. You know, both sides, thirty-four feet with a fifty-four foot, uh, right away.
That's if they do.
That's what the standard is.
Right. I think the standard allows you to go to parking one side as well. This is where the twenty-six and forty-six is a permitted option in Georgia.
What'd you say the length of the driveway is?
Uh, it, it'll be forty feet from behind the right away. So you have the curb, the sidewalk, and then right away line, and you have forty feet to the garage. Twenty-five feet setback. The house is sitting five feet back from that. That's thirty, and then the garage is recessed ten feet as a requirement for the village that that, the garage is not pushed forward, pushed back another ten feet. So that's forty feet from the right away to the.
Forty feet sufficient to stack two cars.
Typically ten by twenty is a parking space, so forty feet would be.
Bumper to bumper, the garage door.
I, I don't, I mean, if you had large SUVs and, and whatnot, but.
But these are all things to consider with the, with the cartway.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Steve, you have a good idea to get some, some input from emergency service on that. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know if one side of the street is gonna be sufficient for what you got going on here.
It's just an awful lot of houses for one side.
That's certainly something we'll evaluate. We'll go through, we'll talk to emergency services. I think the next comment is about turning movements and emergency vehicles. So, uh, we'll provide those turning movements and have those conversations and incorporate that into a revised plan when we, when we move forward. Yep, understood. Understood. F, curb and sidewalk, we're proposing curb and sidewalk on the proposed streets on both sides. Says here, consideration should be given to the streets being privately owned. I don't know if the township has a preference, whether it's owned or dedicated. I think we, we are proposing for them to be dedicated at this time, but.
What's our township stands on? Each waiver is dedication. It's evolved.
Either way, they're designed the same standard. They have everything the same.
Yeah, being private creates some issues and solves some issues. Can't get school buses. They don't go on private roads usually. Maybe I'll delivery, those types of things get a little more complicated with private. Um, so it's, we can work around whichever direction we need to go on that. I'm sure you've done both.
And if you're planning to, uh, go in front of the board about, uh, sewer issues, you might wanna bring this one up too. And, uh, dedication. I shouldn't say apparently, it's there to say. We may correct. I'd like to hear what they have to say about it. Now it seems to have a good answer.
Um, and like Steve said, everything's being designed the same way either way. So at this point, that answer, we don't necessarily need that answer a hundred percent. So. G, that's talking about the parking requirements that we already, we just discussed, parking in the driveway and parking on one side and how the garage, um, counts and doesn't, or doesn't count. H, uh, we'll, we'll comply with that. That's talking about the zoning, um, building zoning requirements for the, the, the footprint of the house and the garage widths and and the setback of, of ten feet. We'll provide some sort of architectural rendering to, to show how we sample architectural elevations. Um, to meet that as we go through preliminary. Um, and then I is just the Bucks County Planning Commission. Five, uh, we'll provide documentation for the phase one. We had a phase one complete. We'll provide that to the township. Six and seven have to do with stormwater management. Um, we have done some conceptual stormwater because it impacted our open space. We started doing some calculations to figure out if these basins are big enough and, and will they work where they're located? Uh, we have a concept down. We did some preliminary testing, uh, on site. The testing did not reveal any infiltration rates. There's a lot of water table out there, so there's no real infiltration. So these basins are gonna be designed, uh, most likely as the MRC design basins. Those are modified release rate, rate control basins. Um, so we will, we're, we're gonna have to go through an individual MPDS, um, for the high quality kind of split, but the whole, the whole project will be permitted as one, uh, individual permit. Uh, eight talks about the sewer, which we already kinda touched on. I'll need to dive through that again. I think that's pretty much all of these, um. Seven, sorry, maybe I did. Correct, and we're, yes, we're looking to try to take as much water away from that area as, as possible and still meet that, um. Yeah, I think once, once we get ready to go to preliminary, we may have a little staff meeting with you to go over that and make sure what we're doing is, is the right direction there. We need to over detain in that area or something to help you out. Something maybe we can, we can do. Eight E was the special exception for the, uh, for the pump station. And then F is just talking about the planning modules that I talked about, us doing a global planning module for, for the whole, all the projects within the, in the township. Uh, nine is, is public water, um, same, same concept there where we'll be talking to the RA to, to service that as well.
Not as complicated as public sewer, because you don't have to. Seven plan aspect, but we public water service is still under the service area agreement we have with RA, so that's that, that part of it is still.
Uh, number ten, uh, again, talks about traffic. Uh, we did submit that traffic study. That'll be reviewed. I'm sure improvements. Um, that's part of this comment will be improvements along lawn and Mountain View and forest. That's all will be addressed as part of that traffic study, um, and can be um, handled at preliminary. Once we get that review letter and see what those recommendations are. Um, eleven, same thing with the traffic, with the potential to modify the traffic signal permit. That's, that's already there. Twelve, uh, twelve A is what I was referring to in the beginning when I said we, we meet the five hundred feet. However, we got um, fifteen or sixteen units accessing that cul-de-sac. We're in only, I believe it's twelve by ordinance. Um, so a waiver for that would be required to allow, uh, sixteen versus twelve units on that cul-de-sac.
But there's also the other caveat in there. There's several different cul-de-sacs. One is the length and, and the number of units. There's an obligation with everyone clearly says you shouldn't propose a cul-de-sac through the street. Okay, the idea is cul-de-sac are the main. But we tried to minimize it. Of the last hundred before you, we had a lot of discussion. Road. So, or mountain road, but I say all that to say, you know, there will be waivers. This is a scheme that we ultimately prefer. There's waivers required to get to this scheme. Yeah, just you will call it that, right, where the number of units on the lot, while we've talked about modifying the ordinance or cul-de-sacs, number of units on cul-de-sacs that have public water, uh, public utilities. That never made its way all the way through the process and the ordinance hasn't been revised, so this is probably close to what you had talked about, that framework that.
I would agree.
But it would still require waivers that just emergency access. Caveat on in there is that emergency access must be built with standard that people can tap. Yeah, you know, the always big concern always was you didn't wanna be like.
Certain, right.
Really doesn't, in a pinch, you know, worth one in a while, not one in the long term. So you have a couple moving parts there to get around, but it really shouldn't, whether or not. The mountain view. With the cul-de-sac, this obviously takes care of the whole, all cul-de-sac issue. That's the, that's the last. Couple of lots less than.
Right.
Primarily because that road is short.
And I, I think our, part of our thought was Mountain View Road, we don't wanna dump more traffic out Mountain View Road. Um, we already have three access points for this majority of this development, one to forest and two out the lawn. So a fourth access point isn't necessarily needed for everyday use. We're gonna provide that for emergency access should you need to. Um, but our thought process was we don't wanna be sending any traffic out the Mountain View unless it's necessary. So, and we felt we had adequate access for safety reasons elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm I think I agree with this concept over a through street. Like you said, just due to the the size and condition of, of Mountain View Road. Be rebuilding Mountain View Road if, if that's, you know, yes, through road. Or at least portions of it. Which is an option, I suppose. I'm sure it's not one you wanna.
Well. Another piece of it would be extending, by extending that road through, your open space is now gonna get chopped up even more.
No, yours is.
Well, the, the open space that you're worried about being chopped up, whether it's our, our doors, is gonna get chopped up. It's not gonna extend that road and that one nice area of open space is not gonna get chopped. Regardless of what we do with lots or not lots, you're still gonna have a road bisecting through there, so.
What's from you guys?
English topic.
What was your question earlier, Andy, about the, what was your regard to twelve about the? Well, it had to do with the open space calculation, whether or not we should have a road there or if the cul-de-sac is that way. So I just wanted to hear more discussion about it and planning commission thoughts on that as well, you know, whether we're, we're cool with a cul-de-sac or as Steve pointed out, should we have a road going through?
I tend to agree with, uh, Chris. I think this is probably preferential to what we had before. I just don't think Mountain View can handle.
No, I mean, it's, it's a one lane road with wetlands on both sides, so with.
Can't even pull off to the edge.
No, there is no edge. I mean, it's swamp on both sides of the road. And even just the traffic that's there coming in and out, it's a, it's a challenge. So even if it's left as an emergency road for emergency access purposes or to maintain the pumping station or whatever, still gonna put more traffic on a road. It's not really designed to have any more than a car a day, basically, where it is now. But getting back to the cul-de-sac, I mean, I, if you look at it holistically, if you reduce the number of homes, you reduce the length of the cul-de-sac, you don't need the young property funny arrangement for open space. You can solve more problems that way rather than the direction we're going. I realize you reduced it from eighty some to seventy some, but there are still issues there and there are issues that are interrelated.
So your, your concern is the four additional units on the cul-de-sac being going from six to twelve to sixteen and.
Well, I mean, that, that, that's part of the discussion, but I mean, that's a piece that chopped up open space is a piece of it.
That's not gonna change.
Well, it is. I mean, it can.
Can. There's gonna be a road that goes from lawn bisecting.
It's not really our job to we're not here to, that's not.
Well, that's your problem.
That could be, it's not our problem.
It can be debatable if, if, if the law configuration doesn't permit for, there's hardships that you, you can, alright, well, it's not for tonight for that.
It is.
I've been standing here so many times now, it's all the same thing.
Looking at it, and I, I take your point. It's an odd shaped piece of property. So you're gonna get compromises as a result of having an odd shaped piece of property to start with. So if you've got that situation as your base situation, who absorbs the problem? Either you're saying, what you're saying is the township, you know, the township's got to be compromises, whether it's aesthetics or safety or standards or whatever, or you take a look at it and say that's not really developable. And, you know, if you assume that no matter what the property is, there's something to be developed from it. You head down the path that you're if you take the approach that, you know, every property is not going to be developed. And you come up with a difference. And I'll, I'll more to say this later when we get to old business or new business, but I understand the dilemma, I really do. And I don't know what the answer is. We can have a debate or fistfight or whatever about it, but I think that's the crux of the matter is you've got an odd shaped piece of property that gives you a lot of limitations in what you can do with it. And because of those limitations, should the township absorb the waivers? Or should you take another look at your?
The only waiver we're asking for is for sixteen versus twelve. We're not asking for waivers from open space or the configuration of the open space.
Yeah, sure. I mean, you're, you're talking.
There's not a waiver. It's not a waiver request. It's not a waiver. The, the open space configuration is, it's not a, a waiver that we're requesting. I don't think we have to ask. I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't believe. So, I mean, we're trying to work with you to provide as most usable open space, we think when we present the 50 scale plans and we put the. The fields and the other tot lots or whatever it is you guys want to see, you're going to see these open spaces aren't that chopped up, they're not that small. Um, it's going to be plenty of amenities on here. Um, and going from 16 to 12 isn't going to change any of those requirements, I guess is, is my, my point on that.
We think the scale does the service to us.
I can, man, I can tell by just looking at, doesn't matter the size, I'm looking at how many different colors. Irregular shaped, fragmented. That does let me feel the space.
Actually, that can be a benefit to the community that's spread out as far as it is in adding multiple, uh, amenities. You can have tot lots in one area, you can have a vault for another area.
Yeah.
And that's true, that, that is true.
Is, is not a negative. Or dilemma or problem, I think it's actually, you can make this work into the site, it would. In the far left thing.
And it's true, that, that, that part of it's true.
Alright, I guess, uh.
Andy, do you have any, any comments?
No, I appreciate your comments with that here in the condition of Mountain View and I've always been a proponent of emergency access on the cul-de-sac, so I'm. I'm okay with that provided it's done to township standards as Steve had.
Alright, continuing down 12 a little bit, we'll just, uh, kind of go through these a little quicker. Cul-de-sac 12C talks about if it is a cul-de-sac, we should have snow removals, snow storage. Yes, we'll, we'll comply with that during preliminary planning, make sure that's accounted for. Uh, D talks about, uh, the extent of improvements around the full signage of, frontage of the site, uh, for Mountain View, Forests. Um, and Lawn. Um, again, the traffic study has been submitted, we'll wait for that traffic study to come back and, and we can kind of discuss that further unless. You guys feel strongly about those improvements, regardless of what the traffic study says, but, uh, we'll wait for, for those comments back from your traffic review and. Um.
But let me ask you why we're on a topic, are, are you planning on, on doing curb and sidewalk on Lawn? Anywhere on Lawn?
I, I don't believe at this point we are, just internal of the development, um. Correct.
That amenity is. Furred by the township.
Right. Right, that is the intent of that, yeah.
Uh, Steve, do we have the right of way? To put sidewalks in from the little piece to the south over to the main one? Yeah, basically run a past two or three houses.
I'm standing with the traffic. Could be an area where I've discussed alternate. To the value of curb lighting and sidewalk might be able to be used to pay. As an example, pay all of Mountain View, which may get more accessible.
Right, so the fee included.
There could be.
Some trade-offs. Take a tad on, on waiver fee and lieu.
Right, that concept where you don't get exactly the curb widening, curb and sidewalk that you would maybe have a lot of. Value of improvement.
Right. Yeah, no.
So there's, there's a lot.
Right.
I think, I think, I think Alex had a good point. The area between. It's at the west side. The six lot area there connecting to.
How do they get over to use the open space near the side?
Right.
That's a bad spot on that road. Yeah, you do.
With the roads coming in and out of your development, you see having like wider shoulders. Decel and right-hand turns.
I, I don't see the need for any decel lanes or, uh, anything like that, we will. We will pull the radiuses back as if widening would occur so that if widening did happen in the future. I mean, along our frontage, I think we're going to have to do some sort of widening unless you don't want to see widening along the frontage. As Steve suggested, that's a requirement in the ordinance. Um, so. And we can take a look to see what kind of right of way we do have between there, if there's something we can do, I don't think that'll be an issue to connect those. With some sort of pedestrian path, I, I, I can't tell again with the scale, it's hard to see exactly how much space you have.
Yeah, I, I think that's worthy of, of investigation, sure.
Alright. Um, moving along, uh, E, road design will be done to meet your township ordinance. Uh, F is talking about the, the six lot section. Um, that's 360 foot length cul-de-sac, we have a temporary bulb on it, explained it's called temporary. Just for the fact that if it does extend, it can be removed and, uh, will be given to that, that lot, basically. Well, basically the way, the way I would probably set this up is I would have the lot lines go out to the, the right of ways if it went through and then provide a temporary cul-de-sac easement. So then the easement would just get extinguished and the lot owners would own it, it would get split between that open space and lot 73, I guess is how. Yeah, I agree, it gets complicated if you have actual right of way and then have to. Uh, 13th talking about traffic calming, um. I think with the addition of the cul-de-sac, if everybody's okay with that cul-de-sac, I don't know that traffic calming. Um, would be needed, I think if it was a through street, I, I, I definitely think it would have been a good idea, um. You still think it is a good idea, maybe to have one somewhere in the middle, it's something that we can. Uh, we could evaluate.
Well, you could have people, you know, want to avoid that forest road and, and Lawn Avenue intersection down here and cruise through here off of forest and or off of Lawn Avenue. Avoid that corner, so I think that that would be a pretty good thing to have.
Okay.
That corner, that intersection, pain.
It is.
It's a big pain.
Got a great point.
So, yeah, I think that, that calming measures would definitely need to be needed in there, both on all of them. Yeah, like that's right through there, absolutely.
Do you have a, does the township have a preference on what they want to see as far as speed tables or how they go about doing that? Elevated crosswalks or?
We don't have.
You don't have, so I should propose something and we'll. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Uh, 14, trails. Um, again, I think we, we provided some trails, we're providing the connection to ridge, um, with that trail along. Lawn Avenue, um. So I, I don't think there's anything really, we'll, we'll comply with what's, what's in that comment, a couple of minor adjustments, um. Notification to property owners, 15, we'll comply with that, provide a narrative, we'll comply with that. Uh, 17 is where it talks about. Uh, recreation facilities, uh, two play fields, two tot lot playgrounds, one basketball or tennis court. Are, are required to be developed on the site. Um. And those are the amenities that the township would like to see, we can build those into our plan. Um, I, again, I can echo what Brian said, I think it's kind of nice to have open space, different locations, we can provide. A field on either end, you know, um. Provide for everybody to have access without having to walk all the way or. Nobody walks anymore, everybody drives there with their kids, the kids don't, don't walk anymore, so. Um, closer they are to the, to the units, the better.
You're within the.
Right.
Area that's able to be used for. If you were all on steep slope.
He jumping.
Think in the mindset that they need to have another.
Right.
And, you know, we listed right out of. Always with a waiver to flexibility, so. More tot lots. Play fields and not basketball.
More fields, if there's a need for soccer fields in the township or something, you can walk or.
Flexibility that's the framework. Just like the road.
If there was parking provided for open space, would that be taken out of the open space? Right. An impervious surface. That's, I'm just thinking, kind of following up on what Brian was just saying, maybe it makes sense to kind of put something behind the Fisher property there is. Just if people are going up, since that's the biggest bit of open space, like if there was a ball field or a soccer court or something like that up there. It makes sense to have a little parking.
How'd it get there?
No, off the cul-de-sac, off the cul-de-sac.
On the emergency access, then off the cul-de-sac, just.
Well, no, I'm just thinking, even if you put something coming across. Like opposite where the bowl goes right along that, that property line. Yep. Yeah, just a thought.
Yeah.
Well, you play around it.
But I guess the question is, or issue at this point is. Does the plan commission prefer to see facility on this property? Always a question for the developers, but I've heard that it's.
Right.
But your interest is to see what they could do on this property.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing something, I mean, I mean, we wanted a tot lot up on the. On a ridge road development, but. That's much smaller, you anticipate, there's going to be a lot of families.
Okay, um, 18 landscaping and buffers, we'll, we'll provide those per the ordinance, E and S. Um, and then written request for any waivers. So.
That is.
Alright.
That's it. So you got some more direction tonight?
Yes, I think, uh.
You're going to try to get on a supervisor meeting to. Discuss 537 and P R A.
Yeah, I believe that, that's, that's our, one of our next steps here, um. We'll also get the traffic feedback, I think that's another big step that's going to. Uh, ease some concern there, once that's looked at and evaluated. Or not everybody in the township is going to agree with the study.
I do.
Yeah.
It's true.
Alright.
I would love to see a.
I can, yeah, I can certainly create the sheets and send it over at 50 scale and I can even give you some dimensions on the open space and everything. I mean, as long as you're okay with that, Brian, that's not.
Yeah, that was.
A lot of work, I mean, it's.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Something I might, I'd suggest is. Taking or showing the, um, the stormwater management basins. Either, you know, if you're doing a colored one, leave them white or something like that.
Yeah. Stand out.
Yeah, we even have them graded out and everything right now, I can, I can definitely give you a better picture, we just tried to keep it simple, I thought the color was. At least enough to show you where they exist and what they look like. Maybe that's working against me tonight. Very clear for you.
Yeah, if you can do that one.
Yeah, absolutely, I can email those over. Greg and he can pass them along.
Any other questions? You good to go? We can take public comments. Do we have any public comment on? You want to use the microphone, David? Thank you.
Debbie Rogers, 1307 Lawn Avenue, um, you guys act like this is like miles of ground. It is very small. I mean, it is not as big as you make it look. I've walked it, I've played in it, and it is very tiny to put this much. And to, to say that you're going to have a walking path to the ridge, you guys don't even attach to the ridge, there's, there's. Open land above there that's not even owned, so I just don't understand. The concept of this much in a tiny little space, it's a tiny little place. And I just wanted to make it known that it's not as big as you guys are making it sound, because it's. Couple acres.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you come on up here? Thank you.
Anthony Damiani, 221 Mountain View Road, just kind of had a question on where the sewer you're planning to run to, if it's coming up Mountain View. To the pumping station and continuing to serve lots that, you know, but the other side of Mountain View from the development.
It's going to come from the other side of 309.
Right.
From all the way up, here's the pump station, that'll be all force main, this will be gravity coming up on the gravity.
So will gravity line then serve lots on the other side of Mountain View that are supposed to be included or?
Uh, I guess that's to be determined, I think it most likely could serve them.
I know the current.
No, it's.
Right, I know, I know currently they're supposed to be included in the service area, Percoccy, so I wasn't sure if you guys were planning to include. Uh, some of the lots around Mountain View in that.
But I think the, the main will be provided and.
Right, okay. Alright, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Is that north side of Mountain View in the service area? But it's in the Percoccy service, well, it's in a Percoccy service area, but is it in the V C?
Yeah. We are.
Me.
Yeah.
Okay. Ended up at Stop at Mountain View.
Yeah, it doesn't go.
Right. Knew that, I wasn't sure if it was the other side of Mountain.
So, P R A service area.
Yeah, covers that, right.
Right, okay.
Any other public comment on this project? Alright, seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the feedback.
Alright, so we're on old business. Don, I heard you say you had something to say in old business, I don't have any old business.
I'm not sure whether it's old business or new business and Andy talked about. Reading long-winded speeches, now's your time. It's horrible having a couple of months to sit and think, but. This project particularly has been on, on my mind and. The more I looked at it, the more. The more I looked at it, the more I started calling it. Village Plan Two. He had. From back when we did the comprehensive plan. The village plan that was put together by the Bucks County Planning. And. Main issue. One of the main issues that held that project up. For first of all, was the kind of the culture shock of. The size of it. But it only came down to public water and sewer. And what I remember was that. The, um. Bucks County Planning Commission, they went and they met with. Percocie Regional Authority. To figure out. What the cutoff point, how many connections Percocie needed. To have to their system to make it cost effective for them to run the public water and sewer up the other side of three and then answer them. So we look at what's changed between then and now. Is, you know, Percocie run their sewer line up Ridge Road, they conveniently stopped at South Mountain View Road, which would be where the takeoff point. For this side. And with what? The Bucks County Planning Commission had at the time. With their Almont Village Plan. They took whatever number of homes that was and they came up with their. It was here for months, you know, what their plan was going, and they had houses everywhere. They had. They had houses on the hospital property and they had houses next to the cemeteriums. Many, many houses. But even at the end of that. They said, you know. Wanna make this work. You're gonna have to reduce your open space required because just, we just can't make it. And, you know, that kind of ended and went on its way. But if we start to look at this as Almont Village Two, there's a lot of similarities. And there are some differences and. So it still comes down to somewhere along the line, Percocie's gonna have a number. This is the number of connections we need to make it cost effective. And what? A developer doesn't really have the luxury of doing just putting houses anywhere and everywhere. They can only put houses where they have property that they control. Even if some of that property isn't currently served by Percocie, they can, they can kind of. To get to whatever that magic numbers. I think the same way that when we looked at the Almont Village Plan a couple of years ago. And many people said, this really isn't representative. Really, it's dense, it's suburban, it's everything else. I guess what I didn't think of at the time was what kind of this being the alternate. I, I emphasized with them that they've got this. Hardly ugly shape of property they can only do so much with. Whereas when Bucks County put together their plan, they had. You know, it was all beautifully laid out. But they really don't have that luxury. So then, now that we're here. Does the township have to kind of accept? This as being the alternate or? Can we hold the law? Because I still don't think despite the changes that they made. That this really looks. And the other thing about both this plan and the Bucks County Plan is. They weren't the end product, they were the first part, the first stage. Cause. After the public water and sewers here. All these are the lots. In the whole V R area. Now become much more valuable to developers. Put more houses. Because now there's public water and sewer there. So now you're gonna get this jigsaw puzzle effect of. You know, houses here and another development over here, another development over here. That actually makes the Bucks County Plan look good because now we've kind of got this jigsaw puzzle effect. Because we're, we're somewhat forced to take it one piece at a time. Because there isn't, you know, five hundred acres that somebody can just come in and plow down and build. It's all like these jigsaw. Puzzle pieces. So that's concerning. I never thought that that plan would look good compared to this, but in a way it does. But still the issue with the public water and sewer and the concessions that they're asking to make, you know, the concessions for. Including properties that are outside the five thirty-seven area as part of the five thirty-seven area. You know, they're, they're. Say what it is. To me, it's gamesmanship with the open space, you know, getting right of ways and all this kind of stuff. But. My recommendation when we come to it is. I think before we vote on the plan itself. Similar to how we asked the Board of Supervisors, are you in agreement of mending zoning code for resource protection? I would like to hear from the supervisors of the Board of C. Are you open to this concept of? Changing the five thirty-seven plan? You know, they want to bring more properties into the Percocie area, they want to move properties from Telfer in the Percocie area. I think those questions need to be answered first. And then the second question I'd like to hear answered is. So what then Percocie's plan? What, what are they gonna? You know, you talk about, okay, this is gonna be this lot for them. Many customers. What's your source of power, your backup source of power, what's your emergency? Situation, if we get another week long power outage and there's no power to pump your pumping station, then what happens? Water supply, how many homes are you able to serve with your existing water supply? If we have to build a new water tower. I think from the township standpoint. May agree, may disagree, but I think having the information in front of us. Upfront. So that we know where we're going. Is better than this piecemeal. Because if you don't know where you're going, you may wind up somewhere. So that's my overall concern with this is like I said, this to me is Almont Village two point O. And I would like to see what the bigger picture is, especially in terms of the, the public water and sewer. What's that gonna look like? And before we go too far along arguing about whether their. Their open space is regular enough or irregular enough. There are other issues here that are outside of our. I think it's. Good for our standpoint and probably even the developer's standpoint to get a feeling from the supervisors is. It's just something you're going to be agreeable to, you know, the details to follow, but. Are you agreeable to this concept? If you guys find, we'll proceed, but the answer is no. And I think that takes us in a different direction now, I'd rather take now than.
When we're just kind of spinning our wheels if the answer is no and we're sitting here.
Well, right, and then we did that once already, so I, I kind of like the.
You know, it, it sounds like they, they are gonna try to get on. The end of what supervisor discuss some of. And. You know, maybe, maybe the supervisor's giving enough feedback, say, you know. You know, lots in the R A, can't develop in this project. I'm gonna, we're not gonna amend five seven. P R A is not gonna. Servicing here. So we might get that. That input and then, you know. Who knows what the zoning hearing is gonna say about special exception pumping station.
Uh, I think that's well said, John, and I think it's a couple of really good points too, especially with regards to the pumping station. And what becomes of that in a, in a sanding.
Right, I mean, they should have generator backup.
Yeah, for a week. Where's the water tower? Is there enough pressure? What are they gonna have? Where's the water? I mean, because they had already talked about the water tower up there at the corner of. Three oh nine and Ridge Road, right at the bypass there on the, whatever, south. We have talked about it here, so where is that? Where's the water tower? What's the plan? You know, if you then have this, you know, size and capacity for X number of houses. What becomes the situation with the water? Because the river will have to be there. Potential, I mean. I mean, if not, fine, whatever, but like, what's, what's the plan?
Right.
We need to have more information in front of us, make informed decisions. I mean, like John say, piecemeal this, you know, because they come around and wonder, okay, whatever, she wore this thing in there. It doesn't do anything for the overall good of the community, the continuity of the community, the traffic issues in the community. The potential other things on the other side of Ridge Road, okay, that development there. They're probably better suited over there for retail than it is for residential. You know, I mean.
I agree.
Side right in, right out, that's gonna be a mess. How do people get around? How do people walk? You know?
Yeah, that's why maybe having too much time to think over. I think, you know, this project is so much different than most of the other, you know, a lot line adjustment. It's kind of contained. This isn't contained. This is. You know, much wider. Pandora's. Yeah, right, because if, again, how many acres are in the V R area and they're talking about seventy-three here. This is step one A. All the rest of that is much more easily implemented. After. If this goes forward. And at the same time, I, and the emphasis from the developer's standpoint is. I'm still not in favor of the twenty-five moving from. Telford to Percocie because I think that has other implications to people who are also in the Telford area.
Right. Exactly.
You know, Percocie's got their number and maybe these folks know what it is, maybe they don't, but. I think getting all that information out in the open and having everybody have access to it and be able to figure out what the long range plan is. It's kind of better than this slow step through the.
That wasn't so bad.
It's come with a lot of those. Pursued from more than one that. Like the China study has. Is around all of its developments, not one of its. Used to talk to the board about. If there's even any interest in applying to the service area. So. Staff wise, we've been pushing in that direction to talk about it more globally than. One piece of property.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, they wanted more on this agenda and I said, no. There's no reason to talk about power road project.
Yeah.
Breaking the night.
Right. Yeah, I'd definitely like to hear that. I'd like, I, I would like to have, is there any way that we can get a? Any kind of briefing from P R A with regard to, you know, what? You know, service area on this side looks like with regard to infrastructure and. Potential plans or?
It has been.
But does that entail a water tower? Is that like things of those, you know, questions? Well, I was the one over behind the outpatient center. They wanted to put here, but that's the outpatient center on that side of behind the school, right? Yeah. But again, if you're gonna juxtapose service areas from Telford to P R A and, you know, the water areas from North Penn to P R A and what does that do and, you know?
They can have shared agreements where. Properties on the other side of Ridge, it's Telford's area, Telford's customers, but they run their sewers through Percocie line.
They build. Type of thing, yeah.
Anybody can buy water off. Penn gets their transmission line and their water tank off. They'll put meter feed and sell water.
So what about Telford, what about, what about Telford's, you know? Position, I mean, are they amenable to, you know? Has anybody talked to Telford?
I think Telford's aware of, of development. That are starting to be talked about. I don't think they're. Interested necessarily giving up their area, but they're certainly interested in working with. People to get, to get serviced into their area. Telford gets even more complicated because of our act of three seven plan and split their area into sections where they could serve both. More complicated.
And I think where it gets more complicated on the Telford side, when we talk about, you know, moving customers, even if. It's an accounting function is. If you've got, you know, Telford customers on this side of Ridge Road. All the way down here. And you're gonna take a portion up here and convey them over to the Percocie area. The rest of these folks here are gonna have to wait an awful lot longer.
Yeah, there's no evidence for them.
Right.
To run it up there.
Right, so you're.
So it's gonna have everybody handled by that, you know. By that potential shift. You know? Which becomes an even bigger. Situation and the real need in the township for that issue is the failing systems on Ridge Road. There's some reason, one more reason because not enough customers for them not to bring it up here, that's even longer for them to get their problems fixed.
Which, and gives to my point, I think the issue is much bigger than just this. Yeah, this is, this is kind of like the icing on the cake. The rest of it is really the major. And I, I personally, I'm not in favor of this idea of just approving projects that sit and languish forever and ever. I would propose that those issues at least be scoped out. Before we even consider approving something. Because, and then this could still sit. And I, I don't think it's. Fair to future planning commission members or future residents of the township. Have to inherit something that we decide today. That may down the road not have been the right decision because we don't have all the information. Situations change. I think more than any other project, this one really needs to be scoped out.
I think the other thing I'd like to see would be all of these projects put together on one map, just so you can see. I mean. Mentally, I'm kind of doing it myself, but I think it's. Much different visually when you see it all.
Right, and it's, that's where I go back to, you know, the Almont Village for, whether you elected or not, it was kind of all in one. But here, it's, it's like, it's, it's spoon feed, you know, we're kind of getting, you know, one here, one there. You kind of put it together in your mind, you don't know what the inner connection, you go from here to there, sort of bike trail, whatever. What's the timing of them? But you're kind of having a big picture, you know, a comprehensive plan of, of what the Almont Village two point O is gonna look like in ten years.
Any idea what they're looking at on the other side of Long Avenue, behind the side of? I mean, it's a residential, is it retail, is it commercial? Seems to be really. I mean, that's a, that's a question there too. It's the village, right? So, you know. Residential there or should it be commercial or should it retail or some mix? You know?
But again. That's Telford.
Right.
So you kind of get that moving in that direction as well, here moving to Percocie.
And the other ones are there.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
Tell a developer that he's gotta do. When it's already, I mean, it's already zoned for what he's allowed to do. How do you tell him he's gotta follow some, some, uh, different guideline? And this is what we'd like to see, but we can't afford it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, he, he, he's in business to make money, you know, he's gonna, you know, make money the best he can.
Yeah, I mean, I. You look at that, you look at that big plant. You know, and I didn't want to see that. But like you said, if that was just a big field that was owned by one developer. That's what we would have. We wouldn't have this piecemeal. I mean, he's gonna try to keep picking up properties and, and maybe adding to that. He. Leaded that tonight with the. This side of. Long Avenue. It's, it's gonna be piecemeal. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be that. Village. Block and alley.
Yes.
Like it was.
Yes.
The conceptual. That they had here. We're. I mean, that, well, now.
I mean, everything like garages in the back and all that, that's been walked away from, so there's that, so many.
But it's.
Conceptual, you know, deviations here from what the village was supposed to be.
I agree, I agree. The problem is we don't have footholds to force. What we'd like to see.
At one, at one time back then, there was. More property owners interested.
Yes, you're right, yeah.
It was a larger chunk of that.
Yeah.
Village area that was. Who was gonna take in LA? There were properties on Burned Way.
Yeah. Farming? Yeah.
There was more potential to do a larger project.
Yeah.
Back then.
And it, it almost happened, didn't it? I forget the name of the developer. De Luca. Luca, that, that's the one.
Well, even, you know, where this crotchety guy owns his property over here, I got these big spools of, you know, rising conduit. But it had been there since I bought it because of the guy's name was, but you know, he was interested in this, you know, this, this big plan and Luca pulled out. He went bankrupt and the property got foreclosed and that's how I bought it, you know, so I mean, relations change.
Yeah, that plan felt by way.
Yeah.
And then years and years later, not all the same people were interested in. Participate.
Nice way to say it, selling, yeah.
The value chain.
Yeah.
What a developer was willing to pay back in the early two thousand.
On Allentown Road going up towards Quaker Town, about with the Unami Creek views. And this is kind of where I got the, the jigsaw puzzle idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, it was a farm and a red barn and, you know, the farmhouse is gone, the barn's gone, sign, the sign up front, you know, in the low six hundred thousand.
Only twelve left.
Only twelve left.
Only twelve left, mid six hundreds.
Yeah, it's like, get them while they're hot. But what I noticed is as time has gone by, okay, so that area is public water and sewer because they're uphill, they were able to, you know, come through a right of way under Allentown Road, other development has public water and sewer, and that's how that, you know, the jigsaw puzzles connected each other. So that's why I said, you know, whatever stage one is, it's stage one, because like, once you start, once you get the initial base in, you get all these other pieces. There you go. And people live there already, you know, they get to retire. So it's a benefit for them. So, my Arab friends used to say, once you let the camel get his nose under the tent, it's controlled. I've heard that one. Yeah, that was the weirdest. This was years and years.
Yeah.
Actually, the thing to happen, Mark, where it's, if you're, there's something secret going on, you're either under the tent or not.
All right, do we have any more discussion on? Why don't I move forward?
That was my old business.
That's your own. Steve, do we have any approvals?
No, it's the only one. And you can see on here, those other projects are all on here. Yeah, Augustine Road, a little bit. That's the development that that. The Ridge Hill Road, a little view, but I think that's bigger by. That's the old, that, that house that they bought. They'll get that.
Nice.
Listen, Karen.
Or is it our road that gave us the get plan, but it's frigging difficult. The totally outside is.
What's Augustine Road? Is that? Or Moser?
Um, Moser. Moser is still on there, down there at Ford under Final Plan.
But that's.
Oh.
Oh. Yeah, so is that the one? Yeah, is that over by, uh, Fred Krenzel? Okay.
Probably not thrown in there. It changes the name. A bike man in thirty lots, seventeen lots in that.
That's what property?
Oh, yeah.
That tower's taken care of all that, huh?
Yep.
Water tower.
Bottom. Yeah.
We need to get that picture of the broken down septic truck.
Yeah, we've seen nothing of that.
If they were going to come to me.
Just an article about that up in the High Valley regarding, uh, new starts for warehouses, how it's about what fit down fifty percent and two peaks, that's really starting to starting to.
Yeah, the markets get saturated.
Yep, yeah, you got too many warehouse.
Yeah. I did think of something else. So the Wawa that was proposed down on State Road. As part of that discussion, they were talking about putting in an electric vehicle charging facility. It's a Wawa on six sixty three near the turnpike. They're putting one of those in.
Is that what that is back?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I looked at that for a note while I say, what could that be? And then I noticed the electric pole and then the, um, a lot of the cabinets were shrink wrapped in Tesla. Okay, there's an electric vehicle charging thing. So if you want to see what one looks like, or an electric vehicle, get in line. Wawa up on Quaker Town.
Doesn't have luxury view.
They.
Back and back to.
No, they, I don't know what this plan does, like. But on their original plan, they had green spaces that were going to be normal spaces now, but they were reserved for future. That was a question that they didn't count those towards their standard, uh, for additional work. So they had an area, it's not, it wasn't a separate lot at the back of this, some of those spaces off to the side. They had already designated that as future.
And I remember the discussion was to make sure that they weren't too close to the gas pumps, because those two things.
When they go up.
When the lithium batteries and thermal run away, it's right by the pump.
Or it sparks and you're plugging it in.
Keep it a little.
Yeah, so Wawa and Quaker Town, I guess they ran a space, a separate little sub lot behind the Wawa. Pretty far away from the G.
Things will be filtering through. I don't know that they're all going to be one month after, no, but.
Great.
What's the consensus with sewer up Old Bethel or Old? Like are they putting, so I know they ran water all the way up there, are they? Sewer?
The sewer is what we're, we can, whether it's our building, our pillar, our many, our five thirty seven. Allow essentially extend the service area up there, but there's no art plan at all. Both patents agreed that you probably look for grant one. But it's not all the way to Fort because the road goes up and down yet.
Yeah.
So these are the first rides. Eight hundred feet maybe to go past the.
But that, would you be able to take that out then, uh, Tabor Road out to your, or?
No, Tabor Road is actually going to be a low pressure, low pressure course, meaning pump back up. Not a gravity.
Oh, then you can't get that back.
Yeah, that all falls away.
Yeah, you gotta have that by the.
And then just wetlands back there.
So what they do, they stub the water under Old Bethel, then went up and it came back across for birdies then?
Yeah, I don't even. Farly out there. They came through David Road, drilled under the wetlands to get it out. But yeah, they went all the way across.
Ran up and then.
Had to drill it.
And is that what's going in on Bethel and Pike near birdies and Royans?
Yeah.
It came out that Tabor Road from Old Bethel, like across. Went underneath.
They had some extra money, believe it or not, some of their grants. Old Bethel, like water stand. They look down and bring extend the water.
So that went up how far then? Up just up to like Bernie's distance on the far side?
I think so, yeah. I don't think.
Yeah. But does it run down then, like Fedegary Way? So not the Royanne, not.
I don't know about the Royanne, but not the Dari.
Yeah, under the creek there.
Yeah. Give them more grants or work, they'll turn up. Faminated. You're essentially done. Every day.
One's a coal sack going in, or not the roundabout.
Verizon was their fault.
Oh, I did read that. Oh, really? Okay.
Well, so effectively multiple springs. Because even if they didn't.
Start, start, right.
Max, Steve. Can't coordinate that.
It might end up being coordinated by default. Even though PPL came in.
There you are. All right, any other old business? All right, let's move on to new business, John. I heard you say you have some new business.
This new world. One rant per day.
You don't have anything?
No.
I thought you said you did, I'm sorry. Uh, I don't have anything. Anybody have new business? No. All right, so I'll, in Florida, public comment? Public comment? A successful developer?
Like, you know, they're asking for all these ones. Built, but it's comparison to what we're asking for here.
I don't.
I don't exactly, but what we were just talking about.
Oh, yeah, it's kind of obvious. Well.
Yeah. That's the. They're not building it now. Right now, it's one property, it's just building. Do the development, do the road, and the infrastructure, and sell to a national builder.
You think that's.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes.
But they have a lot of developments down.
Oh, they do.
They've done, we've done other work, not to this scale, but they have other large. Oh, if you go up, up at the other roundabout.
Oh, okay. Go on there.
Right. And Paul Brothers built back in there, that was one of them. And they. Those are large, live at large.
Um, thank you. Anyone else have a comment? All right, seeing no, no more public comment, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Who would make that motion?
Let's look at it.
All in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. All right, thank you, everyone.